First, we're gonna start with invocation. We got Pastor Bob Fox in the audience. And the pastor does a lot of work with our police department. I want to thank you for that, as well as all the other good things he does in our community. So if everyone would please stand. We'll do that, the invocation, then we'll have the place to preach.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and for the opportunity to be here. Let me share just a word from James with you. Just a second. Only about four pages. "Who is wise and understanding among you? Let him show it by his good life, by deeds done in humility that come from wisdom." That's my prayer for you tonight and for our city, for all our leaders. Please join with me in prayer. Father, we thank you this day for the blessings that you shared with us, for the love that you demonstrate so clearly, for the presence that's yours in every situation that we face. And, Father, we have choices that we make. Help us never to miss an opportunity to make a difference in someone's life, to show and demonstrate the love that you showed to us, that we would do as Christ has done, and demonstrate that by turning the other cheek, by lifting up, by encouraging, by blessing. And I pray, Father, that this city council, and our mayor, and all our leaders would just be blessed tonight. We thank you for their desire and their purposed attitudes that they have in trying to make a difference when everybody else won't step up. They have. And I thank you for them. I pray that you bless them and their families. You bless everyone that's here tonight that's taken time out to be here. And we just pray, Father, that everything that's said and done tonight would just give glory and honor to you. For I ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Pastor Bob Fox.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure to the leaders. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ma'am, clerk, we'll have a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Councilmember Foster had a meeting, and I'm not sure if he's coming back or not. He was here at the briefing, and he left to go welcome some folks, so I don't know if he'll come back in or not. So time will tell. With that, we got the approval of the minutes of April 17, 2017, for adoption.
I'd like to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public hearings. The first one is CU 1117 Southern. Well, we had presentations, but there weren't any, so I skipped right over that. Excuse me. But in case you had an agenda, there were no presentations tonight. So, public hearing, CU 1117 Southern. Current, Jennifer.
Item B is CU 1117 Southern Current. The property is located on the north side of Old Smithfield Road between Gen Road and NC 581 South. The property is indicated in the red boundary area on the map. The property is owned R-20A Residential, and the applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the development and operation of a solar farm facility. The solar farm operations are permitted use within this district, but only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by the city council. A small portion of the property is located within Wayne County's jurisdiction; however, that portion is not included within the proposed solar farm development plans. The property is currently vacant farmland. The city's comprehensive land use plan designates this property for medium-density residential development, and city water and sewer are not available to the property, and the property is not located within a special flood hazard area. The submitted site plan indicates a 20-foot-wide gated access and gravel drive extending from Old Smithfield Road north to a three-point turn around located at the rear of the site. The drive will provide access to the eastern half of the solar farm. There's also another 20-foot-wide gravel drive that is shown adjacent to the facility access point. This drive is part of a shared access easement to an existing cell tower located at the rear of the property. This drive will provide access to the western half of the solar farm. The solar panels will be installed within an area to be surrounded by a six-foot-high chain-link fence and barbed wire security fence. Regards to landscaping, a type-C 20-foot-wide landscape buffer has been proposed surrounding the entire solar farm. Staff prefers that the development be buffered using slats in the chain-link fence, and has made that recommendation to the applicant. An adjacent 50-foot-wide underground utility easement runs through a portion of the proposed solar farm, and the panels are not to encroach within this easement. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on August 7. Then we have a few pictures of this night currently. Any questions?
Any questions from Jennifer, council? All right. Thanks, Jennifer. This is a public hearing for CU 1117 Southern Current. Actress requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a solar farm facility. You have to be sworn in. Anybody who wants to speak, if you would, please come. The clerk will need to swear you in. So if there's anybody who wants to speak, please come. Everybody that wants to talk about this, please come up. Then we're gonna do it one time. We're gonna swear you in one time. Apparently, you're the only one that wants to speak. Ma'am, you were first, so we'll start with you.
Okay. My name is Amy Hollowell-Hartley, and me and my brother and sister own 119.81 acres adjacent to the proposed solar farm site. We have the JR Hollowell Farm, LLC, and we're opposed to the solar farm. The reasons being is mainly health and safety. There's been no long-term studies about the runoff of soil contamination, the runoff of water that would contaminate the water, too. It could contaminate our farm, which is primarily being used for farmland now. If we had a tornado or hurricane to come through and any of the solar panels are damaged, we understand that through research, it could be considered a hazardous waysite. We also have a Fort Township well that's less than a quarter of a mile that serves the Fort Township area in the Rosewood community that is not far from that area. Secondly, it would decrease land values in our area. It would decrease our land values. It's unsightly, the possible contamination of existing farmland. We can be farming our land, and if we have runoff from there, who's not to say that 10 or 15 years from now, it's not contaminating our land as well? We already have the coal ash ponds over in our area that has contaminated a lot of the water. You've seen a lot of that in the news lately. And there's been no long-range studies to show the health and safety or the decommissioning of the sites. What happens if the companies that are running it go out of business? Who's gonna take it down? Who's gonna restore the land? The land's not gonna be able to be restored to be farmed again or for any purpose or use, so what's gonna happen? We have a lot of animals around that area. Even though you've got a six-foot-high chain-link fence, deer, other animals can go under it or through it, and they could damage the solar panels or damage. And what's to say that there's no leakage from that either? I have letters. My brother and sister are here with me right now. All three of us own JR Hollowell Farm, LLC. I also have letters from James Hollowell, George Hollowell, and Bryson Hollowell. George lives in Hildebrand, North Carolina. Bryson lives in Mobile, Alabama. James Hollowell lives in Goldsboro, but he is in ill health. They also oppose the solar farm. I have these letters that you can read as well. But we're asking that the city council deny the use for the solar farm, mainly because of health and safety. There's no long-range studies showing how it's gonna affect us in 10, 15, 20, 30 years. And it's not primarily for our purposes, it's for our children. This farm has been in our family since the 1800s, and we've always used it for farmland. We don't want to use it for anything else. So I do appreciate.
If you have anything you wanna give us, ma'am, you can give it to the clerk. Any others, anything, if you wanna leave?
Okay. There's three letters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
One of you gentlemen wanna come? Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, sir.
Good morning. Good evening, sir. My name is Charles. I stay on the Roode Wood Road, right down next to where this place is gonna be across the branch. We got a farm down. We have a farm down there, 110 acres, in the same area. And that's according to being a eyesore. We worried about the coal ash things going on now. We don't know what this is gonna bring, how it's gonna contaminate the land, and it's I just think we need some more time to look at what's it's gonna do to the land with the runoff. We got a problem going on, and we are not taking care of it. And we're gonna add some more problems with that, and we don't know what it's gonna do to the land. And it's contaminating it. And can't do anything with it. You can't farm on it anymore. Have a storm, who gonna come in and fix it? We just don't know these things, and I think we need more study on it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Sir, you wanna speak?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Jesse Ray Williams, Jr., and I, too, have lived on this farm, this area, for quite some time, all my life. Just as long as the young lady that was here before, we grew up together. And we have great concerns about this property, that these people are trying to impose on us. We've had enough problems in our area over the years to not have to contend with this, the coal ash, all this stuff that's been going on. We don't need this. And I've been little studying about it that I've come to know about, is that it's farmland, and once this facility is established, it won't be no good to nobody. No good to us, our children, our grandchildren will be left here to contend with whatever they might not even know about it, if it's not wrote down for them to know about it. And these people that's trying to impose this on us have tried to impose things before that was not just right. And I just don't think that we need that right now. They have plenty of land, let them put it on their land. This is my thought.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Would anybody else like to speak on the solar farm? Why don't both of you come up, and both of you can get sworn in?
Do you swear or confirm the comments you have about or the whole truth, and nothing that the truth so help you God? Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Earl Patterson, and I stay in the area, too, and I'd just like to voice the sentiment of what some of the members just said. We don't know what this solar panel is gonna produce, and we would like to get some more information and some more studies before that's put out there. And like they said, right now, we is going through the process of coal ash, and that's not settled. So we don't want nothing else imposed on the community that might be a hazard. And I don't think nobody on this board would want that in their area, not knowing what it's gonna cause for your health. So that's all we asking, to be fair and considerate, and if you can, help the community out with that, because it's needed, and it's a grave issue, and it need to be addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening. This is where I get the daggers in my back. I'm Leslie Williams. I represent Southern Current. The reason why we are applying for this CUP on this particular piece of land is because we'd already had a CUP granted on the other side of the land, the other side of the railroad track. Unfortunately, we could not get access to develop the solar farm on that side of the railroad track that's owned by Mr. Lane. He owns this parcel, too. Duke wanted us to develop the solar farm in this area. The infrastructure is good for it, and so they granted us to exchange our application from one side, one piece of land, to the other piece of land. Unfortunately, we have to reapply for the CUP, because it's the same size, it's the same parcel number, but it's a different configuration. So that's why we're here to ask for another CUP. The CUP on the other side was granted and was even extended. There have been numerous studies on solar in North Carolina. I'll be more than happy if anybody has any questions. I spend my career educating and talking about solar and its issues and health. It is not, it is nowhere close to the coal ash issue. There are so many studies that prove that there is no contamination, there is a decommissioning paragraph in the lease, the land will be turned back for agricultural use. I'm happy to provide workshops, to bring experts in to help explain anything and allay the fears. We can do public workshops, we can do county council workshops, whatever is needed. And as I say, the only reason why we're here this evening is because we had to move from one side to the other side, so our CUP does not transfer. But it was granted.
I'm not telling you how to do your business, ma'am, but you might wanna have a neighborhood meeting. You might want to let our planning folks know how to contact you or someone, because it sounds like there are questions in the neighborhood and certainly.
For sure. Happy to do that.
If I lived out there, I would question it, too. So you might want to just give them your contact info, and thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wanna speak?
I have a question.
Well, I might answer it, and I might not. But what is it?
It was just on something Jennifer read. I wanted her, I didn't, I don't know if I heard that correctly, about the gravel road up to the cell phone tower.
Well, let's see if she can address that for you.
Here's a gravel road here that's gonna access that goes back to the cell phone tower. It's just a shared-use path. And whose shared-use path is that? Between who and who?
How about y'all do this, like, all out of the meeting, okay? Y'all can just get Jennifer, she can show you the map, and y'all do that out of the meeting. All right, we're gonna close this public hearing, and we're gonna move you to CU 1117 McIntyre Funeral Home.
Item C is CU 1117 McIntyre Funeral Home. The property is located on the north side of Royal Avenue between Audubon Avenue and Herman Street. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a funeral home in the neighborhood business zoning district. Previously, this property has been operated as a mixed-use development consisting of a barber and beauty shops, a general contractor's office, and a daycare. According to the city's Unified Development Code, a conditional use permit is required and must be approved by city council in order to operate the funeral home within the neighborhood business zoning district. The hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and as needed on Saturdays. The number of employees is five to seven. The submitted site plan, which you see on the screen, shows that the property consists of an existing 5,068-square-foot, single-story, brick veneer and metal building. The applicant's floor plan consists of assembly areas, offices, conference rooms, storage areas, and restrooms. The property is accessed with an existing 20-foot-wide access driveway from Royal Avenue. Thirty-one parking spaces are required for this property, and the submitted site plan shows 40 parking spaces, including two handicapped accessible spaces. Existing landscaping is compliant with the city's landscape ordinance. No additional plantings are required. Sidewalks are required for the development along Royal Avenue for approximately 142 linear feet. The developer must either install the sidewalks or pay a fee in lieu in the amount of $2,130. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation at your council meeting on August 7. This is a shot of the existing building. As you can see, the existing landscaping. This is the rear parking area. Any questions?
Any questions, Jennifer, from the council? All right. We're gonna open the public hearing for CU 1117 McIntyre Funeral Home. They request a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a funeral home in the neighborhood business zoning district. So would anybody like to speak on this issue? Would anybody like to speak? All right. Seeing now, we're gonna close this public hearing, and that's the end of our public hearings. So for any of you that have anything to do these hearings, when does the planning commission meet next?
31st.
31st of July, at what time?
7:00.
Okay, so for any of y'all, this is your planning commission right here, so round of applause for them, because they do a really good work. So they've heard everything you've heard tonight, and they will meet on July 31st at 7:00 in this room next door. No, in this room right here. And you're welcome to come. I don't think you can speak unless they ask you questions, but if you just wanna come hear what they say, you're welcome to do that. If you want to get more information from the lady in the back, or any kind of questions, I'm sure that she will give you her contact information, so that hopefully you at least have good information. So with that, we're gonna excuse our planning commission, and thank you for what you do. Thank you, folks, for coming for this. All right, as it clears out, next, we're gonna have our public comment period, and this is, anybody from the audience is allowed to come up and speak for up to three minutes. So I will open our public comment period. Does anybody like to speak? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Let me shut that door, please.
Paul Martin, 801 South Benny's Place, Goldsboro.
Good evening, Mr. Martin.
Good evening. I was recently elected to be the chairperson of the Goldsboro Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Congratulations.
Thank you. When I attended the last work session on June 26, I was surprised to see that boards and commission reports was the first item on the agenda. And for the Recreation and Advisory Commission, there was, quote, "No report at this time", end of quote. I apologize for there not being a timely report and presentation from the Recreation Advisory Commission at that meeting. In the future, I promise that if the Recreation Advisory Commission receives a timely request for a report, we will respond accordingly. I was informed that we would be given an opportunity to present our report at the work session this evening, and we had hoped to discuss the topics to report in our scheduled meeting on July 11. Unfortunately, our meeting was canceled. Therefore, four of our eight Recreation Advisory Commission members met informally to discuss information to include in the report, and a report was drafted and sent to the RAC members. There were no objections to the drafted information in our report by any of the members, or any request to include any additional issues. Therefore, I'm submitting this report on behalf of the RAC to the city council and city manager, and also the city clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Then we worked on it tonight a little bit, where y'all couldn't, some question on how you have your meetings. I think we can sort of fix that tonight.
Yes, I heard that.
And in the future, we'll be sure that y'all are included in our briefings. We're more than welcome to hear from our committees. Apologize for that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Would anybody else like, from the audience, like to speak? Ms. Jeanette, come on up, sir.
Henry Jeanette, 512 North Jackson Street. You've had my card in your file for the last 10 years. 919-735-8561 before 8:00. In behalf of the millions and millions of wonderful Christian people across thousands and thousands of years, and also in behalf of the wonderful, good people all the way from Wayne County, North Carolina, and that includes Greenville, Kinston, and Goldsboro, and in behalf of the dozen churches within a mile of where we're sitting, and also include the rest of the churches in Goldsboro and Wayne County, we, the clean Christian people of Wayne County, do hereby oppose Sunday morning alcoholic beverage sales. And I am sure the majority of the boat of population of this county, and I am sure the majority of the population on this board will agree with me, as I tour this fine downtown today, I count 10 possible alcoholic establishments, and then I count 12 wonderful churches. And so if you take a vote on it right now, the vote is 10 to 12 in favor of no. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you, sir. You have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Jeanette.
Would anybody else like to comment? I didn't think you were here just to say, hey.
I don't believe it.
Good evening. How are you, Ms. Stanley?
I've got a few questions, as usual. I'll just address them. I've got right here, where your mayor in 2001 got a grant, and it stipulates that y'all were supposed to be monitoring the FEMA land and sending the report in every two years. I can't find nobody who's been sending them in. And Mr. Chris Cruz in Raleigh, who's with FEMA, I don't think he's got them. That's one of my problems. Second, this letter that Mr. Rowe sent to Mr. Pierce, it was said that if they run those little four-wheelers after 11:00 and before 8:00, that they gonna get in trouble, okay? And that they can't be on FEMA land. They're still using FEMA land. Has anybody done anything to them? It's time that y'all start doing something. I'm a registered nurse, I keep my license up, but if I treated my patients the way y'all been treating me, they'd all die, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. We will check on the reporting. I can't answer that, but we can check on it and see if we're doing it or not doing it.
Ms. Pierce did come up to my house, and she is trying to block off the area coming in front of my house. For two weekends now, she's been pretty successful.
I will tell you that I know we're talking to the county. You know, the county is the predominant landowner out there, and I think the county is also working with them to try to figure out how to block off areas in front of your house.
Well, I think they need to.
There are people working on it, but.
I think y'all need to stop procrastinating this and get on with stick.
Yes, ma'am.
Stop fooling around. Enough is enough. I thank you for your time, and we're gonna have a little function out there this Saturday. Have y'all give permission for them to use the FEMA land? Then somebody needs to be monitoring it, and if they trespass, you need to have the sheriff out there and lock them up.
Ms. Stanley, you know we can't tell the sheriff what to do.
Huh?
Now, you know we can't tell the sheriff what to do.
Well, the sheriff has already agreed to carry out this North Carolina statute, and a trespassing isn't North Carolina statute, so you got him.
All right.
If he don't do his job, we need to vote him out.
You have a good night, Ms. Stanley.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Stanley.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Actually, I looked at the agenda, and they had educational requirements on there already, so I guess y'all may already be looking at it. So let me speed up my process. Usually, when I talk to people, you know, we talk about education, it's important to get your degree. A lot of times, we tell people it's important to get your degree, so you can get a particular position that you're looking for with some organization, business, and/or establishment. So most of the time, we have a management-level position that also correlates to a particular degree and experience that you have, because they both run together. It's not the fact that you have the experience, you do not have the degree, most of the time you will not get hired, because having a degree will be a requirement, a prereq, or however that job will put that particular situation. So I found myself doing a little bit of reading, of course, because, you know, I like to read. And I think it was in the Goldsboro Daily News, this was March 6, 2016, written I listened aptly when you talked about people serving on boards and commissions at your briefing, and the problem of the planning commission and some of the other boards. Well, I would tell you, that problem is nearly 40 years old, and the city has not corrected all those years. When I worked for the city, it was a problem, and some folks couldn't even serve on the planning board, commission board. They had it fixed where you couldn't, and it's continued to be a problem. And maybe back then, 40 years ago, the demographics hadn't changed so, but they have changed, and there is some validity to having some diversity on your boards. And when I say diversity, I'm not talking about we females, I'm talking about people of different colors and ethnic groups. There is a need for that, folks. The world is changing. You talked tonight about doing things in parks and recreation planning and what you're going to do. Well, if you don't have the people that you're planning for on those boards and commissions, you're making and taking over what should be their right to be a part of that process, and you tax them. And so that is taxation without representation, and you do remember the Boston Tea Party, all of you. And so you don't want a Boston Tea Party in the 2018, so let's be fair to peoples and do something about this. That loose language that is in there relating to boards and commissions, that is not definite, it was there when I was here working, and it's a shame that it's never been addressed and cleaned up, but it needs to be. It is way past that. There are people out there, when you talk about a 4% tax to do this, parks and recreation stuff is just great, oh, I love it, and most people do, but you've got people, and I'm not speaking for me, I am speaking for the citizens of Goldsboro that call me day and night. I can't even go out to Raleigh without my phone being lit up with some people bringing me concerns. They are concerned, they senior citizens are just in a tizzy about that 4.50 that they're going to have to pay. And when you talk about a 4% tax for people, let's be real, folks, folks have not had raises for years. I retired in 96, and retired state employees, I believe we had one raise gene in all those years. So people are on fixed incomes, there's not extra money coming in. Be fair to citizens, let's clean up some of this stuff. And I'm not talking about y'all, you inherited a lot of these problems that is 50, 20, 30 years old, but I believe you are men of goodwill, and I believe you'll clean them up, and I'm looking forward to you doing that and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. As I think, I hope you've heard, we are going to look at all our boards, how they're set up, who's on them, and at least be sure the people that are serving today are legitimately on the boards, and then we'll work them back into the stuff you've brought up. So we are going to...
I just think, you know, it's goodwill for your citizens, and it creates, it stops some of the problems that are being created. People will have trust and faith in you as a board, and I believe, like I said, most of you are good guys, you've got your little quirks, and I got mine, too. So, you know, that's the human condition, the quirks, but the party is that we got to work harder to clean up, and y'all are doing a good job. I would tell you, I know them all the time, but I'm real proud of what y'all are doing. And I say all the time, you inherited some big problems that was left over, but y'all were strong enough to do the task.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? All right, we're going to close the public comment period, thank you to all you who did speak, and we're going to move to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, you removed item D from the consent agenda, so you have item E through L. Again, your consent agenda consisting of items E through L.
Make a motion that the council approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D, items E through L.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Staden?
Yes.
Councilmember Hager?
Yes.
Councilmember Ickx?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Items requiring individual action, we have none. City manager report?
Mayor and council, I just would, I guess, remind the community and welcome a few new members of a number of change commands over Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. The first one, several of us attended, was the change of command for the 9/16, and we welcome Colonel Scoville Curran. Colonel Eric Jenkins has left us, so again, we've gotten to know Colonel Jenkins and really appreciated his time and efforts here. I'm sure Colonel Curran will be equally impressive, they always seem to be. And we also had Major General Ogden, who had been the commander of the 9/16 some years ago, back in town to do that change of command, so he was very impressed with the things going on in and around Goldsboro, and thanked us for the continuing community support. On the fourth fighter wing side, we do have, welcome Colonel Craig Keyes to the fourth medical group, who replaced Colonel Paul Connor, and then Colonel Jason Knight with the fourth mission support group, who replaced Colonel Joseph Slavik. And again, do want to welcome all of them, and we'll look forward to working with them in the years to come. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
Your report.
Mayor and council reports. I think last time we started with you, and if they cut to this time, we'll start with you, Mr. Williams.
Okay. I want to thank St. Mark's, Bishop Smith, the men's committee. Over the weekend, I got honored, and they honored me with this recognition of service to the city of Goldsboro, and I was taken aback because, I mean, I got an opportunity to be around some great men from all statues, and I knew they were here, but I didn't, you know, get a chance to just sit down with them, eat with them, and, I mean, I'm just honored, and I just, you know, all the men that were there, I got a chance to see doctors, lawyers, I got a chance to see men show their emotions, because they saw their mentors who started them out and allowed them to create a business, and, I mean, I think that this is something wonderful, and we need to continue that. I just want to thank that group for putting that together.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations on your award.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Rowan?
Well, in a few minutes, I'm going to read a Purple Heart proclamation for the August the 4th, but I'd like to use this opportunity to encourage anyone who has a Purple Heart or knows of someone in their family who has had a Purple Heart, or someone in their family or friends who were Gold Star, which means that they were killed, KIA in action, that on August the 4th, there is a wonderful dinner that's held at First Pentecostal Church. We've been doing this about five years, and it's very moving, and I think last year, we had about 75 recipients, and it's something that just shows that this community truly appreciates their military, and especially those guys who, some of them gave it all, and some of them absolutely gave part of it, and it's moving. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jeanette?
Just want to say a couple of things tonight. Two, or three birthdays. Happy birthdays to my sister-in-law Martha Bailey, happy birthday to my brother, who's been there for me my whole life, Ralph Leon Bailey, and a special happy birthday to my wife-to-be, Ms. Amanda Boyle, who's like my right hand and like beats me to death for what I don't do right. But, secondly, I want to speak on the situation that Ms. Edwards has brought to our attention. We definitely need to pay attention to the boards and the way that committees and things are set up specifically for diversity and things of that nature, but I think it goes back into a situation where we have to also, as a city council and as a city in entirety with our employees and everyone, to let everyone know, as we do our jobs, to let everyone know that these positions are open for anyone of any race, color, creed, or religion. I don't think everybody knows about that. And then, finally, I've, like I said, I'm always about technology, and the ones who know me, I'm all about trying to bring new jobs. I'm still working on that, and still finding ways to try to connect us and make and figure out to, I guess, bring new jobs to this area. And I think we've had, with my business opening and a surge from, I guess, from Lenore to Duplin, we're finding out that, and I'm finding out, that we might be able to find a new tax base to come in through Wayne County because of what I've pushed and what the county and the city has pushed together to bring new technology, jobs to this area. So I'm very happy and thankful for that, and thank you, mayor and council, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jeanette. Ms. Stanley?
No comments.
Say again?
Just a couple of things. Mr. Reverend Ferguson, who gave the invocation tonight, is, I don't know how many of you know it, but he's been the pastor for the police department since he's been here, and he's leaving in August, so he's moving closer to his family, I think, but the police department knows who's going to miss it. The other thing is, Ms. Shirley, believe me, I hear you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. We've got two proclamations tonight. The first one I'm going to do is the National Night Out, and the next one is the Purple Heart, which Mr. Broadway alluded to, and he's going to do that. So proclamation, 34th Annual National Night Out 2017. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime and drug prevention program on August 1st, 2017 called National Night Out. Whereas the 34th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Goldsboro to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police, community, crime, and drug prevention efforts. Whereas the city of Goldsboro plays a vital role in assisting the Goldsboro Police Department, Wayne County Sheriff's Department, through joint crime and drug prevention efforts, and the city and county supporting National Night Out 2017 locally. Whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Goldsboro be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime and drug abuse in Goldsboro, Wayne County. Whereas police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety and awareness, and cooperation are important things in National Night Out. Therefore, I check out and marry the city of Goldsboro to hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1, 2017, as the 34th Annual National Night Out in the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and do hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Goldsboro to join National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 34th Annual National Night Out, August 1, 2017. I would just like to comment, there are a lot of people that worked really hard to put this together. We usually have a pretty big and a pretty good turnout, but as a city, as a county, as our police, we are doing a lot of emphasis on community policing, we're doing a lot of emphasis as a city on community relationships. It would be really great to see this park filled this night with kids, adults, and just I would encourage everyone to just come out, there'll be a lot of activities, I think there's some free food, too, and it's just, there's a hundred reasons to come, and I would encourage all our citizens to come, be with our police department, be with our sheriff department, and all the other providers that will be there. It is important to show your support to them as much as they support us, so I would encourage everyone to come. And Mr. Rowan, you'll do the Purple Heart?
Yes, sir. And this is a joint resolution. In the past, we've had a resolution from the city and a resolution from the county, and people got tired of hearing all these "whereas's," so now we've just got one. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as the Badge of Military Merit, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. Whereas the Purple Heart was established by General George Washington on August 7, 1782, during the Revolutionary War, is the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor or merit, whereas, following nearly 150 years of disuse, the Purple Heart was reestablished by the President of the United States on February 22, 1932. And whereas the Purple Heart is awarded to military and civilian members of the U.S. Armed Forces who are wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy and passed humously to the next of kin in the name of those who were killed in action or died of wounds received in action. Whereas the citizens of Goldsboro and Wayne County have great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have served our country in the armed forces. Whereas veterans have paid the high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas many citizens of our city, county, and state have earned a Purple Heart as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with enemy forces construed as a singular meritorious act of essential service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform, wounded or killed by the enemy, while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Now therefore, be it further resolved that jointly that Goldsboro City Council and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners commend the Board of Directors of the Goldsboro Wayne Purple Heart Foundation for honoring Purple Heart recipients at its annual banquet on August 4, 2017, as a special tribute to those service members who have received a Purple Heart and the families of the Purple Heart recipients who are deceased, adopted this 18th day of July, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. That, too, is another really important function that we encourage folks to support. Those folks gave a lot to our country to make us where we are today. With that, this is our last and only meeting in July, so I wish everyone a great rest of your July, and please make it productive, do what you can to make our city better, and we will see you back in August. Thanks for coming.